She would please rise as we welcome Nicholas Preston of Life Church to lead us in the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
All right, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We acknowledge you as Lord and Creator of all. Lord, we thank you for this time and season of Christmas, as we look forward to celebrating your birth, and I just pray for a meaningful celebration for everyone this year. Thank you for the city of Fergus Falls. Thank you for its leadership. Pray for the peace and prosperity of this town, Lord, and this area. I ask that you give all of the leaders, Lord, God wisdom to know the decisions to make. God guide them. We just pray for peace and unity as well in this city, Lord. Thank you for this meeting tonight, Lord. We committed to you, and in the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, good evening, everyone. It is 5:30 on December 2nd, 2021, uh, 2024. And we'll call this meeting the Fergus Falls City Council order.
Here.
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 And we have a quorum. First item. This evening, we'll open the floor for the open forum. Anyone wishing to speak to the council on any item that's not on the agenda this evening, feel free to do so at this time.
Good evening. Cecily Cookman, resident of Fergus Falls. Couple of questions again this evening. Looking at some of the items on the agenda here, I was hoping that I could get an explanation of the policy for the sale of city properties. Just in the last year and a half here, I've seen at least three, and now there's a fourth property, fourth and, well, third and fourth properties going tonight, it looks like, or proposals on them that are going out without having any open bids to them. These are closed bids. This is behind closed doors, and it's brought up for discussion or vote here at the council, but it's not brought up for public bids. So that's very curious to me what our city policy is for sale of city properties. The other thing would be, I don't know if I can bring this up now or not, but number four, under the ordinance and resolutions, the 2025 Community Arena User Agreement. I find that rather curious that we're paying seventeen and a half percent. Are we, are we paying that to ourselves because we're the owners of that? I, it's, it's a, it's a curiosity question. Yeah, because it seems rather odd. I don't pay my husband rent because my name's on the, on their, on our house. So, but I could. Be kind of counterproductive, waste of time. I think.
We'll wait till Cecily's done.
Okay. That's all I have for now.
Thanks, Cecily.
Thank you.
I can talk about the arena. Yeah, so when we say we're, the city is funding seventeen and a half percent of that. So we have the whole budget in, in the city's budget, so that shows up in, as an expense line item, and I think it's $660,000, if I remember correctly. And then we have the various revenue sources, so what we don't receive from outside revenue then goes basically into the property tax levy. So we don't pay ourselves or anything like that. It's just, that's the portion that's made up with the property tax levy.
Then ninety-seven thousand?
Yep. I think around ninety-six, ninety-seven thousand.
So in other words, it's not self-sufficient then, is what you're telling me?
Correct. Yep, the city's putting that in, and that's been since the, the very start of the arena. You know, for things like open, open skate for the general public to come in, and also like the park and rec offices being housed up there.
That's also just similar to the ball fields and to the soccer fields and the other facilities and the city parks that we provide for the city. Do you want to talk about just the, bringing back that sale of public property?
Yeah, we do have a policy. Thank you, Your Honor, members. We do have a policy related to selling city property, which we can provide at the next meeting. We can send that out. I don't know it off the top of my head to recite all of the different provisions of that. I will say, though, there is a provision within the city charter that requires any land that is sold by the city to happen at two different meetings with ten days in between, and the intent of that, which you'll see on our agenda this evening, is to alert the public that a potential transaction is happening at one meeting, giving them a period of time, a minimum of ten days, to express their interest or to speak to their elected officials about why they should or shouldn't sell the land or express an interest in that, and then action has to take place at a subsequent meeting, which I think does exactly what you're expressing. It allows the public an opportunity to express their interest or weigh in or, or try to stop a sale if they don't feel like the city should move forward. So, you know, tonight, we're just looking at introducing that. It would have to come back before the council to become official if property was going to be sold.
Thanks, Andrew. We'll make sure to make that policy. It already is available, but we'll make sure to bring it back. Anyone else wishing to address the council on any items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move along to the approval of the agenda, and I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Brumseth.
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. We did have one item on the consent agenda. Item number three, Councilmember Craymeyer just wants to have a quick question addressed or brought forward.
Okay, thank you. With that, we can discuss that individually, but I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Anybody there, Your Honor?
Thanks, Anthony.
I'll second.
Thanks, Jim. All favor that motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Uh, we have one public hearing this morning, and it is a housing tax rebate program, public hearing for the property located at 528 East St. Charles Avenue. And I'll call on our community development manager, Clara Beck. Good evening, Clara.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is probably one of your last requests for a tax abatement for a new housing project. The program remains open until December 31st, so we will continue to accept applications should they come in until the 31st. And then we would hold a public hearing on those in the new year, but anything after that would be sunset, and the program would be complete. This application is for a second build by Habitat for Humanity on a parcel of land that they bought on East St. Charles Avenue. They split it into two. Back in July, they came forward with their first request for the first house, which was approved by the city council. Now, this is their request for the second house on the, the new parcel that was created. So that's one of the things that you're going to be doing tonight. The other thing is, based on the split of the parcel that took place, we're switching parcel numbers around a little bit. So the one that you approved in July is going to be having a new parcel number, and the one that you're approving tonight is keeping the original parcel number. So you're going to be approving a resolution saying that you're amending that parcel number for the, for the one from July, and then the new one tonight will have the old parcel number. I know that that is confusing, but we have to keep the numbers straight. So, um, the house that they are building currently, or that they will be building when the weather changes, is valued at $210,000, so it's well within the program guidelines. And I think it's a great thing to support Habitat for Humanity. They've done some really great stuff in our community regarding housing, and we are happy that they continue to be active. So I'll take any questions.
Thanks, Clara. Any questions to Clara? If not, we will open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak to the property tax rebate for the property located at 528 East St. Charles Avenue? Please do so at this time. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing, and it's back to the council. We would look for a resolution approving that property tax.
I'd like to offer that.
Thank you. Scott, second. Jim, questions for Clara? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Uh, under the consent agenda, there are three items remaining. If we remove item number three, if there's anyone who would like to discuss any of the other three individually. Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution approving those three items. Thanks, Scott.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Anthony. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Item number three, we'd be looking for a resolution accepting unmanned aerial vehicle policy and setting a public hearing on December 16th at 5:30 PM. Al, did you have a question?
Yeah, I had received a text earlier today from a citizen, and it, it was under the heading under Operator's Responsibilities. It's 4B. It says the UAV shall only be used for official and legitimate purposes. And that person was asking about what's the definition of that? Of official and legitimate purposes?
Okay. That's all.
Your Honor. What I'll do is have Chief Bergen weigh in on that and provide something prior to the public hearing on the 16th, so he can answer that question that evening, and then hopefully get adoption of the policy the same evening. So if that's, if that's acceptable, I'll punt that to Chief Bergen and, and ensure that he defines what legitimate purposes is for the sake of this drone policy.
Official and legitimate. So we're not, we're not approving this policy. We're just setting the public hearing then, accepting it. Someone like to offer that tonight, but we'll make sure to get that cleared up for, for the, for everyone, Al.
And I don't, yeah.
Do we offer that?
Offer that, yep. Just to make, let know too that I wasn't the only one that received that text, so, thank you.
Thank you. Second, Scott, thank you. Other questions for staff? So this is, there's a resolution setting that public hearing for December 16th. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Uh, that resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, tonight, we have six items for our consideration, starting with a resolution introducing the sale of city-owned property located at 702 South Tower Road. I'll call on city administrator Andrew Brumseth.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, council members. At our last city council meeting, we held a closed session at the end of the the meeting to discuss whether or not the city council was interested in entertaining a sale of the property located at 702 South Tower Road. We received a letter of intent to purchase that property from David and Tracy Chappett, who live next to the property at 708 South Tower Road. As part of that discussion, the council suggested they would be open to selling that, but had a few questions, one being access for Otter Tail Power related to Piscadam. We have received a letter from Otter Tail Power stating they do not object to this transaction. We also have included in your packet a easement for the ingress and egress to that parcel, so no concerns from Otter Tail Power. And then it was also asked that the purchase price not be less than the assessed value of the property. Otter Tail County currently has the assessed value of the property at $19,400, and the offer on the table is for $19,500, so just above the assessed price. A couple of items to note. The city acquired this parcel back in April of 2010 for $12,650 with the intent of using that area as staging for the construction of the Tower Road Bridge. We no longer have a use for this property, and currently, we are maintaining that through mowing and other means on a regular basis. So this would not only make this parcel taxable, but also would reduce the workload of city staff on property that is not necessary for city operation. If there's any questions, I will entertain those. The proposers are in the audience this evening, if anybody has questions for them. But I will note, tonight, we would just be simply introducing this and then could entertain the transaction at our next meeting, as I mentioned earlier. There is a proposed purchase agreement in your packet, so that would be the purchase agreement that would be signed after council approval at the next meeting, should that take place. So I'll pause there and see if there's any questions.
Thank you, Andrew, and we can introduce this through a resolution this evening. If someone would like to offer that?
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
Thanks, Anthony. Scott, second. Thank you. Scott, question?
Question. So it looks like the offer is nineteen-five, which at least it's above the, you know, assessed value, at least that. The other items that fall into there with legal fees, transfer title, legal fees, recording fees, and things like that. Do we know what those fees would be? Besides that, that purchase price, because it's hard to agree to something when we don't know what it's going to cost.
Yep, Your Honor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Craymeyer. The legal fees would be covered by the city attorney doing the work, and then closing would happen at Pemberton Law and would not anticipate any fees for that. There is, the state deed tax would be estimated at $64.35, and then if there's any releases or satisfactions necessary to clear the title, which I don't believe that there are, they would be recorded at the cost of $46 each. So it's fairly, you know, I don't have an exact number, but it's fairly minimal. It would be a couple hundred dollars at most.
Other questions? There's a resolution to introduce this. Again, it will not be acted upon until the 16th of December at that council meeting, but there is a resolution to introduce this this evening.
I, I'd like to make a comment, if I may.
Sure.
Just due to the fact that these other few little fees here, if the city attorney is covered by the city, that's what that is, so there is, might be a few fees out there. I just think to make it clear that the purchasers should just cover that, too.
Yeah, Your Honor, Councilmember Craymeyer. Rolf's work on this would be covered under the retainer fee that we already paid.
Right.
Are you suggesting that we should bill the purchaser for that time, or?
No, I think that can be covered through the city, but any other fees that would be, uh, incurred should be the purchasers. If there's a small, you know, sixty-four, thirty-five, or forty-six dollars, whatever it is, have those in, and if there's any fees at Pemberton's, you know, that, I don't think that would be, I know that there probably wouldn't be any fees because the purchaser works there.
Yeah, Your Honor. Councilmember Craymeyer, the way the proposed purchase agreement is written today spells out that the city would incur the, the fees mentioned in the letter of intent, so as we're acting on that purchase agreement at the next meeting, if that's not acceptable to the council, we'd have to change those terms. But that's how it's written today.
When we do.
You'll have to act on that, or, or amend that.
When would, when would we discuss that now?
It's been introduced as presented, so.
Yeah, I would suggest that you do that at the next meeting, when the public has the ability to weigh in on this. Right now, we're introducing essentially the letter of intent, and then if the council wishes to introduce this this evening with a positive vote, then that kind of triggers it up, triggers it to the next step, which is purchase agreement. So I would suggest, you know, if you have comments related to that, you could certainly send them our way. Otherwise, the next meeting would be a good time to weigh through that.
Very good.
So, any other questions? Yes.
Can I comment on that, Ben?
Please do.
Sure. Mayor, council, Dave Shepian, the adjacent property owner that's looking to purchase this lot. If we're gonna split hairs over $250, $300, we'll just pay him. Uh, we don't care, you know? It's like, we're really interested in that lot to preserve the integrity of our property, and it's not really a buildable lot, so we just think it would be in the best interest, so. If you want to put that in the minutes or agendas or notes, so that we would agree to that, and we could bring a closing statement to the next council meeting, so that would be outlined.
Certainly.
And then let's, Your Honor, let's amend the purchase agreement to reflect that then, and then that's what we'll present for approval in two weeks.
Yeah, and Tracy can update that purchase agreement and get that back to you tomorrow, whenever.
Thanks, Dave.
Yep.
Thanks, Tracy. All right, so there's a resolution on the floor to introduce this, and we will bring the purchase agreement back in two weeks. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Uh, item number two is a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of assignment and assumption of rights and obligation agreements for TIF District 1-10, which is Sunridge, Sunset Ridge Apartments. We'll call on our city finance director, Phil Sonmore.
Thank you, Your Honor, council, and that number is actually TIF District 4-10. So you'll see that in the agreements. So it's 4-10. Yep, Sunset Ridge Apartments. These were the apartments that were built up off of Pioneer Road, kind of behind the old Target Building. Three sets of apartments up there. A hundred and five units is what was in the TIF plan. So the city adopted that TIF plan back in August 19th of 2013, and approved a tax increment revenue note at that time of $1,193,476, and that was implemented on March 14th, 2014. And this agreement is with Sunset Ridge Apartments of Fergus Falls, LLLP. Now, the apartments are being sold right now to Sunset Ridge Investments. Make sure I'm reading that correctly here. Yep, LLC, so Sunset Ridge Investments LLC. So that note has been in place. The city's been collecting tax increments since 2017, and the city retains 5% of that for administration of the district, then remits 95% of that to the developer. Back in 2020, the city council did acknowledge and consented to an assignment of that note to Wings Financial. The current developer was refinancing at that time, so assigning that towards the refinancing. But now we're looking at a sale and assigning that over to a new owner. This is a completely new owner. The name is very similar, but Sunset Ridge Investments LLC is a new owner. I reached out to them today. They did point out they're keeping the same management company and the same manager, so as far as how things are run there and for the residents, that will be unchanged. And also something important for the city is that they're reporting to the city is, they're familiar how to do that with tax increment. You have to do annual reporting because you have to have so many units that qualify with the income limits. So they, they do that through our department. Sandy Cunningham does that reporting with them. So that will stay the same, so that's good news. So before you is a resolution, and then the attached execution of the assignment and assumption agreement. So since, you know, these apartments are, they're built, we don't have to worry about, you know, like a new owner coming in and finishing a project. This will, um, you know, keep paying out the increment. I believe it's through December of 2030 is how long this note goes. So that is before you, and.
Thank you, Bill. And I'm sure there's some questions. Let's get a resolution on the floor.
A resolution.
Thank you, Jim.
A second.
Scott's second. Thank you. Question? Mr. Mortensen, did you have a question?
Yeah, Bill, do we have the original purchase agreement in front of us? Do we have that in our packet that we can go through to say, hey, this is what was in there? What can we do to transfer?
The purchase agreement between these two entities?
The initial, the initial agreement that they had for the property when they did the TIF, do we have that there that says they can transfer this over to another buyer?
Yes. Um, I, that would have been emailed out. Lynn, you sent that out this morning, right? That's in the development agreement.
Okay.
If you'd like me to grab the clause, I could point it out, but it does state that they are allowed to transfer ownership, but they can't transfer this TIF without your consent as a city council. So that's why they have to come before you. I should have pointed out also, they are looking at completing this transaction yet in December, mid to late December. That's why we're here tonight, so.
What have we done in the past? What have we done in the past with this type of a transfer?
Yep, um, the city councils have approved these in the past. One that comes to mind off the top of my head is the old Eisenhower School. Originally, I forget even the original developer that started that project, and then when, when it went to Lutheran Brother and Homes, there's probably actually even one in between there. They had to come and get an assignment through the city to assign that TIF note as part of that property. And the city council has approved that. Now, do I think of others off the top of my head? That's one I'm thinking of.
Tower, Tower Road Apartments.
Which one?
Tower Road was another one.
Um, sure, the, um, Herzog that went to H9. Yep, good point on that one. And that was approved as well.
Doesn't change the terms. They've been in place for ten years, correct?
This new owner, you know, takes all the responsibilities, and of course, the TIF benefits with it. So the benefits and all the responsibilities. So we're assigning the development agreement, the original, over to them.
What does this property do for the city other than, uh, house, house individuals? Is there anything else that this property does for the city that's a benefit to the city?
You know, I, it certainly houses individuals, provides housing for a hundred and five units. I don't know what else I could answer with that, but certainly provides housing. You know, they are, they're good properties. They're, we have had no issues with the management out there, and as far as all their reporting and.
How many employees do they have? Did that say in the, in the statement?
I don't know.
Okay. Are they gonna add more employees as they go forward with the new owner?
I have no idea. Yep.
Other questions? Yeah, Laura?
First, thank you, Bill, for answering all of my questions in my email earlier today.
You bet.
But I have a quick question on, I know that in here you had stated that the TIF plan estimated increment was to start in 2016, but it didn't actually start until 2017. Can you tell me why?
I cannot off the top of my head. We could, oftentimes, you know, when you start a TIF district, you, you put it in, and you're like, this is when we think that'll start. It can fluctuate a year or whatnot. It depends on when that new value is added on at the county level and how construction is going. And we don't get very concerned about that with the first receipt of increment when it's a pay-as-you-go district, because the developer only receives any tax increment if they pay their taxes, so. And that note has a drop dead date, you know, it terms out at the end of December of 2030. So if they, if, let's say, let's say the property didn't generate the amount of tax increment that was in that original plan, they would only receive based on their taxes, and then if they didn't receive all their note, they just wouldn't receive all their note. This, it is not a general obligation of the city, so if there's not enough tax increment generated to pay it, the city is not liable to pay those pay-as-you-go notes. So that's a very good thing. That's a good way to structure them. So if it starts a year later, they don't start receiving anything till a year later as well. It all corresponds with that new value of the taxes that's added on. And it could have been just a, you know, was there a delay in construction or, or whatnot, so. But they are collecting, you know, pretty well on track. I think when I looked this morning, estimated like $90,000 a year of taxes being paid on that, and it's actually around 93 is what we're collecting in TIF. So that does come in there.
So they are on pace, right?
Yes, they are on pace, and, yep. And actually, they should actually be a little ahead of schedule if we're looking at that 93,000 versus the 90, and.
Thanks, Bill. Other questions?
I suppose a follow-up question on that, Bill, was that obviously the, the balance of the outstanding note is 642,000, and they paid 550, but you're saying the drop dead date is 2030?
Yep.
So I don't know whether, will they get to, will they get to 642?
We don't run out the amortizations because the, you know, the increment we receive can change a bit each year. So we put it in on the next line that's coming in, and, um, you know, each year, we put it in on the actual. Now, we could run out projections, but again, it's not an obligation of the city beyond the taxes they've paid today.
Any other questions for Bill? There's a resolution.
So I suppose the question is, and what, what if we don't approve it? What happens?
Then I would have to let them know that, and I, you know, would that change their sale? It's possible, because this would be a funding source for their, you know, paying for the project. So. It is in your control to, you know, to assign it or not to assign it, certainly. Then I would throw that back to them, so.
And do we know who the buyers are? You know, obviously, the group that built it was out of Brainerd, and they were sort of somewhat, somewhat local.
The person I've been talking with is, is out of Fargo, I believe, is where, where he's from that I've been talking to. A Sam Jelleberg, but I would, I think it's a Fargo number and...
Bill, do you know if we have a set requirement to what should have TIF and what should not have TIF? Do we have like a, a set, this type of project, this type of project that does this, creates this many jobs, brings back this much revenue back to the city? Do we have something like that?
Hey, Clara, correct me. We have our business subsidy policy, correct? But we do not have a specific TIF policy, I don't believe, right?
No. You would use the subsidy policy to guide your discussions, and then it's based per project. So based on the projects that you're looking at, you would make your decision for TIF.
So do I have the subsidy policy in front of me today? Do I have it here?
No.
To make a decision on the TIF? I don't.
You've already made a decision on, on the TIF. This would just be assigning the TIF.
But they made a decision back in 2014, right?
Yes.
Right. I didn't make a decision, they did, right?
Right.
Okay. So my thoughts would be, until I've had something that guides me going forward to say, hey, this is the subsidy policy, I don't know if I can go forward with that just off of not knowing anything. Usually, the knowledge of that in front of me will help guide me whether this is a good individual to keep going with TIF or not. I'm new to the council. It may change with other people, but I just don't see the relevance if I don't have a framework to go off of.
All right, so we have a resolution signing the, authorizing and the execution, assignment of the assumptions for the TIF agreement that was established in 2014. Roll call, please.
No.
No.
Yes. No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
That resolution fails.
Okay. I will let them know and see where they go from there.
Thank you, Bill.
Yep, thank you.
Item number three is a resolution adopting the cannabis selection policy, and I will call on our community development manager, Clara Beck.
Hello again, Mayor and Council members. This is a revisiting of the cannabis selection policy that we looked at at the committee of the whole meeting on Wednesday of last week. I did make a couple more changes, nothing too substantive, but just to make the application process a little bit more clear for the applicants and also to make it a little bit more clear what you would be scoring in the event, and again, this is only in the event if multiple applications for a cannabis retail registration are received by the city within a 30-day period. So it's entirely possible that this policy may never come to light again, but we should have something on the books in the event that that does occur. So the changes that were made from Wednesday morning made it more explicitly clear that an application will not proceed with being looked at if it's not meeting all of our city ordinances right off the bat. So I just, I made that a little bit more obvious upfront. Then I made it more clear in the application process where they would be providing information about the number of jobs being created, the wages that they would be paying, any local links to businesses or agriculture, those sorts of things. And then I also updated what we would be requesting for a site plan to move it away from just showing where it would be in relation to our zoning ordinances and more in relation to its entrances and exits and the ventilation plans. So something just to give a visual of what the business could look like so you can picture it when you're, when you're discussing. But those are the changes, and hopefully, we can come to a decision on, on a policy.
Thanks, Clara. And we did discuss this on Wednesday morning as well. I'm sure there's further questions, but I look for a resolution at this time, adopting that cannabis selection policy.
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Anthony. Questions for Clara from the council?
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Your Honor, I ask that you grant me a little bit of grace here to, to talk a little bit more open about cannabis and the whole thing leading up to the selection policy, if that's, if that's okay with you. Have a little discussion on that or not?
Yeah, whatever. Go ahead.
The reason for that...
The selection policy is in front of us. That's what we're voting on.
And I'll get to there. I'll get to there. The reason for this is the Third Ward has been without some representation for quite a while, and so I want to make sure that the Third Ward is aware of the things that are occurring in the city in regards to, one, buffer zones and also the selection policy. So one of the questions that I have for you, Clara, is in regards, are you familiar with, and I'm sure you are, because you've been with this process from day one, are you familiar with the Minnesota statute 342.13 that deals with buffer zones from the state of Minnesota?
Yes, I would say to an extent.
Can you, can you give me those numbers of what the state of Minnesota had said was their recommended buffer zones?
They gave an allowable number, so they didn't necessarily make a recommendation, but they said municipalities could go up to, I believe it's 1,000 feet for buffer zones.
For schools, yeah.
For schools and for several other, like halfway houses, things like that.
Yep. So they went 1,000 feet for schools, 500 feet for parks, and 500 feet for daycares. And at this time, according to our ordinance 59, 121.112, what does the Third Ward have now as far as buffer zones in the city of Fergus Falls?
Are you asking what businesses are in the Third Ward, specific to...
Nope. I'm just asking for the Third Ward, because when I went around the Third Ward, they wanted to know how far the buffer zones would be from a cannabis business in our city.
Okay. So citywide, the buffer zones that were chosen were, I believe, 250 feet.
Yes. So 250 feet from a school, 250 feet from a park, 250 feet from a daycare, when the state statute is 1,000 feet to a school, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Do you know where that decision came from, to take us from 1,000 feet from a school down to 75% less at 250?
Yep. There was a cannabis committee formed of several council members, the chief of public safety, city administrator, and that decision came from discussions of that group.
That group. Do we know if there was anybody involved in public health that was in that group?
The city doesn't have a specific public health department. We are in contact with the county's public health department, but specifically in reference to buffer zones, no.
So no public health was in there to say to go from 1,000 down to 250? I'm trying to make sure that this Third Ward knows that we're at 250 feet with a buffer zone. And what my concern is, is we probably made a policy based on businesses and not based on the public health of our adolescents and kids in this community.
This was a decision based on, on zoning, specifically zoning, correct? Not, not public health.
Not public health.
Right.
On that end, okay. One of the things that, and we're gonna get, Mr. Mayor, we're gonna get to the selection committee, but one of the things that just perplexes me here is that we did not look at what the state kind of recommended as 1,000 feet from a school, and we went down to 250, but at the same time, we're only gonna give one or two licenses to people to sell cannabis. It absolutely is going in the wrong direction both ways. It doesn't make sense to me that we would allow at 250 feet someone to sell cannabis on every corner in our city, but then we're only gonna allow one license. And so can you enlighten me to why that occurred that way?
Maybe somebody that was on the committee would like to weigh in?
Rich, I'll, I'll wait.
Go ahead.
Do you wanna go, Ben?
No, go ahead, Scott.
We just, we originally went with, you have to have one in the city of Fergus Falls by state statute. We went with two, so it wouldn't be a monopoly. We wanted to have zones five, six. Six only. And then the council changed it so we could have it to downtown. And so Zone 6 would put it out in the western edge of town. And so then we went to downtown, and then that's when the 250 kind of mark kind of came in that place. And that's kind of how we ended up, the council agreed to that, and then that's where we started the pace of going forward with that. So it's in Zone 3, and Zone 6 is the only places it can be, so.
I think part of the intent, and I wasn't present for all of the conversations, I was present for mostly just things related to zoning toward the very end of the committee meetings, but I think the intent was to create a city code that could grow and change as time went on with limited numbers of actual language changes to it. So depending on how businesses are doing, how things are going, the council would have the ability to come in and say, we would allow, you know, X number more licenses, but the rest of the language would not necessarily have to be updated to reflect that.
And I think someone else from the committee can, can correct me, but there are no businesses zoned currently within 1,000 feet of the schools. So in order for that business to actually be within there, they would have a zoning change, which would have to come before the council, which we were pretty clear that that wasn't gonna be the case.
One more thing.
Scott, go ahead.
We took the zoning map. Lynn made a great map and put it out 1,000 feet from everything, every piece of school, daycares, and Zone 3 downtown would not be able to have one. There's one little spot over on the end of Main Street, just a little corner could be part of it. Am I right on that? And so that's why we started shrinking it down, because there was a big push for downtown, have it downtown. And I was against having it downtown. I didn't, I didn't vote for it, I don't believe, because I don't want it downtown. I want it out in Zone 6, but that's where the council came along, so that's what we have to go with. And so that's kind of where it went, so.
I appreciate Andrew.
I think the committee actually wanted to be at 1,000 feet, and we kept bringing iteration after iteration back to this council, and we didn't have five votes to get anything passed. And that's when Chief Bergeron said, somebody's gotta, there's gotta be compromise here because not having an ordinance in place is much worse than, you know, figuring out whether it's 250 or 1,000 or somewhere in between. So it came down to sheer council support. There weren't enough votes to keep it at 1,000, but that was the original recommendation out of the committee. And the planning commission also reviewed this, and their recommendation, I think, was significantly different than that of the committee. So there was a lot of moving parts, and this version in front of you, which has the 250-foot buffer, is what the council ultimately could muster up five votes to get approved and get on the books.
So I appreciate that, and so that's where I come to ask a question. Did that council, which made that decision, did they take public health into note? Did they confer with any public health in the way it sounds from Clara that they didn't? Is OLV and the Third Ward, which is in my ward, are they considered a school?
Yes, they are a school.
They are? Okay. So right now, as I measured out, they're 880 feet from one of the THC stores in the community right now. So they are under 1,000 feet to their park. The other thing is that B3 zone...
They're not a park, they are a school.
Well, to their school, to their playground, because I know there was discussion of playgrounds. So I want it known to the Third Ward that they're 880 feet away. Also, the B3 zone continues down into where Tisdale Chiropractic, Northwestern Bank, Digital Guru, that whole section. That section right there, if one of those businesses changes, is 255 feet from the playground at OLV out their door. And they would be eligible for a cannabis license as we sit right now today, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Your Honor, with an intramuse permit, that would have to be granted by this council.
Yes, but still, they are within the buffer zone, correct?
They would be right outside of that.
Yes.
They can start with, we can stop, but we don't have to say yes. That's part of our, we, we are, they're not, we, we can say yes or no to any, any of them.
So the question was, are they outside the buffer zone? They're, they're able to get a license in the city of Minnesota? So one of the things that concerns me a lot is that we did not, as a community or as a prior council, take into the fact that adolescents, kids, high school kids are the most important residents we have that are vulnerable to this type of thing. Hey, if you're 21, you're an adult, you'll never see me restrict your ability to have cannabis in this city, because it is a law for Minnesota. But it still is a Schedule I drug in line with LSD and heroin, and it's federally illegal. But in Minnesota, we are legal. And so one of the things that I would ask before I get into the selection committee part is, Mr. Eleg, if an ordinance is in place, does that ordinance have the ability with a different council to be looked at, to be changed?
I don't know that I'm prepared to answer that question, Mr. Mortensen.
I appreciate it. How about Andrew?
Yeah, Your Honor, Councilmember Mortensen, of course, absolutely. But I would note, this is the council that approved that ordinance. This council or a future council could undo, amend, or change that ordinance. And I will also note, and I don't like to speak for him, but Chief Bergeron said on multiple occasions throughout the process, it's his recommendation that we start very conservative or restrictive, which I guess in this case, the buffers would be counter to that, because we're less conservative. But he envisions there'll be changes over the years to, to be flexible to what the market and/or laws are doing at that time, but start with something that gets us, you know, prepared for these license applications to be coming in 2025 with amendments to follow. So I think it was anticipated that there would be changes to the ordinance over time.
I appreciate that, Andrew. What I would have suggested if I'd been on the council as we followed the state, state guidelines for this. Selection committee, here's, I just have a question for, for the selection committee. How did this come about and have other cities done this?
The policy?
Yep.
Yep, it's recommended that a city have a selection policy on the books by the state of Minnesota.
It was required or was...
It is recommended. They, so the state of Minnesota put together a guide for cities with, to be able to go through some of this ordinance process, and the recommendation is to have a selection policy on the books if you are going to be restricting your number of licenses, so that there is something that people can look to saying, this is how the decisions that were made, this is how we know, you know, who was placed where they were placed.
Okay, good. One of the things that I look at the selection committee, which I know we're in a unique position right here because we're forced to put out a license, maybe two, in the city, but one of the things when I look at a selection committee for a policy like this, it's about as anti-business as you can get, to me. It's very unfair practice. It's not a practice that I would want to have done to me if I was in the business with someone else. And one of the things in the selection committee that's in there is who has enough funds to do it? Who has the bank funds? Who has experience with it? Who has the means to do it? If that was my sign company going up against Newman Outdoor Sign, Newman Outdoor Sign would win. And then Newman Outdoor Sign would have a monopoly on billboards in the city. So from a businessman's standpoint, this selection policy for business in our city is very inappropriate in my, in my mind. However, I know the situation we're in with cannabis right now. Thank you. Yeah, we specifically, unlike a selection committee, took measures to ensure that small business and the small players in the market would have an opportunity to compete. And so I take your point well. I mean, I'm very cognizant of that as well.
Well, and I'll just, I'll just clarify, some of the, the financial components that are in here are taken directly from what the state application is going to require. So they will already have been providing that information to the state.
All right, so there's a resolution on the floor approving...
I think, just to kind of back on, on the back of Mike's comments a little bit, I think, you know, ultimately, the one thing about the selection committee is, you know, we as the council will be that selection committee. So any, any, obviously, applicant that comes to us, you know, we, we as a body will ultimately get to score that and approve or disapprove whoever is the applicant. So hopefully, as you say, we can look at somebody that's local and small as a positive versus a corporation that comes in from outside of either the, the city or the state, you know, and that can be obviously something that we can discount, you know, as a negative or add as a positive, depending on where you sit.
Yeah, the points, the points are set so that if there's local ownership shown or regional ownership, that the point system would actually make that application score higher.
All right, so there's a resolution approving that selection committee for the cannabis policy. Roll call, please.
No.
No.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number four is a resolution approving 2025 Community Arena User Agreement, including Exhibit A and authorizing the amendment of the 2025 fee schedule, and we'll call on
fee schedule. And we'll call on our city finance director, Bill Salmor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Counsel, we went through this on Wednesday morning in detail, so I didn't intend to go through it again, but it's the agreement with the three users of the community arena. That would be the school district, the Fergus Falls Hockey Association, and the Fergus Falls Figure Skating Club. So we have that before you. We talked briefly earlier about the city 17.5%. That's been unchanged since the beginning. That's, has stayed in here. So the remaining funds then, you know, come from those user groups, from the sale of summer ice as well. We talked Wednesday morning briefly about kids camp, about, there's funding in our city budget for the kids camp portion of that. Exhibit A is attached here, and also the change to the fee schedule. Because we used to have, like, the leagues and curling paying the lowest rate at 175, we're moving that to 195. And when we did our calculations, that's really about what it calculates out to per hour to operate that facility. Again, the school is paying the highest rate, they have the best hours for that. And then the hockey association and the skating club both come in second, and they work out their hours from there. So the rest of it's in the memo if you have other questions, but I'll stop there and see what you'd like to do.
Thanks, Bill. And we can approve this agreement by resolution? Somebody like to offer that? Thanks, Jim. Thanks, Scott. Questions? Roll call, please.
Yes. Mortensen. Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. That resolution is approved. Item number, excuse me, item number five, five is a resolution accepting a letter of intent from the YMCA of Northern Sky for the parking lot located at 1040 East Fir and directing staff to develop conveyance options. Andrew, did you want to speak here and go?
Your Honor, Councilmembers, the reason this is not on consent is because there was a request at the committee of the hold to provide additional information, which was done last, I think Wednesday via email. So if there's any further questions, we'll attempt to answer those. Otherwise, there's nothing further that staff needs to add at this point.
So we can accept that letter of intent and direct staff to develop options for conveyance through a resolution?
I'll make that. I've got a question.
Thanks, Anthony.
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott. Go ahead, Anthony.
So this would actually be a sale, so they will own the land with kind of us having rights of use?
Your Honor, Councilmember Hicks, that is something we need to determine through this process because there is restrictions on the property that would have to be lifted by the legislature or Department of Commerce for us to be able to sell the land. So one of the things that Brian and I talked about and what he is referring to when he says conveyance options is, you know, is the, is the sale of the property the best route? Or is it a long-term lease where, you know, we are the property owners, but they're operating as proposed in their materials for, you know, a long period of time or a significant amount of time? So we want to explore what those different avenues look like and bring that back to you, should you approve this tonight, giving us the direction to do so.
So is there a way classified as a charity, they pay property tax? I should look it up.
I don't know off the top of my head.
I think they're nonprofit.
I don't think they're nonprofit.
I don't think they pay bad taxes.
I don't know if they're a 501(c)(3), but they're a 501.
I don't know.
They are a c)(3).
Right.
Yeah, I guess they are a c)(3).
But there are nonprofits that pay property tax. It depends if they're exempt from that. So.
Other questions?
Your Honor, is this, maybe this for you, Your Honor, or for Andrew? Is this where the part of the process where we discuss what we think are other options? Or do you need this to go forward then the next time we discuss the options? Or I need some clarification so I can either speak freely about the piece of property tonight, or I need to wait?
So right now, it's accepting the letter of intent and directing staff. If you have, if you have comments, you feel free to make them. This will come back to the council before.
So the, the question, the letter of intent stated the word granted. Grant the property to us, is that correct? Yes, Brian says yes. When, when someone is asking to grant the property, just when I do business, that means that they would like to receive the property at no cost. Is that the interpretation of Brian and the council and the staff at this time?
I think then it's, they're going to come back with conveyance options. So what that looks like, whether it's a long-term lease, a sale, a grant, that's what they're going to be working on. Is that correct, Brian?
Yeah, and I guess the biggest thing too, other than that, and keep in mind, we come out with conveyance options, we have not even spoke back with the YMCA either. Maybe they're not even interested in lease too, if that's our only option. But I only think yes, in here, say grants, and we could counter them. What it does, I, like I said, I thought the beneficial was them taking over the maintenance operations as well. So that's a benefit. But yes, if the council's desire through negotiations for purchase price, then we present that back to them.
So one of the things, one of the things, just looking at properties all the time, which I do, that is very intriguing for this location is this is zoned a B1 commercial zone. There's very few commercial zone properties on that edge of the city. If you look at it, the little coffee shop just down the road has that, Lakeway Market has that. But other than that, there's not a lot of commercial property in that end of the city. And so when I look at this from an economic development standpoint, that the city has an asset over there that's commercial already, I look at that as a possibility of a win for the city in the future. I look at the possibility of the city either selling that to, let's say a Starbucks, another Caribou, or something where they can keep the trailhead going, and then also generate real estate tax off of that, but also bring a business to the community. I would hate to give up a commercially zoned piece of property for no profit and then go back to the third ward and tell them that that's what I did. So I, I cannot go forward at this time with this, knowing that if it's not going to be something that can be either sold or leased, where the city will profit from this or be able to use it in the future for economic development, that's what I'd like to see done.
Thanks, Mr. Mortensen. Andrew, Joe, and Connor.
I was just going to say, you know, the intent when, when cities take properties on tax forfeiture like this one was, the intent is not for cities to benefit or, or to profit. And frankly, that's why this restriction is placed on this parcel that we have to get removed. So I think if the, if the conversation that we had with the state of Minnesota was, we'd like to lift this restriction so we could market this as a commercial property or, or business opportunity, I don't think we're going to get very far. If the intent is, you know, we're, we're maintaining ownership, or we're talking to a nonprofit who's going to meet the intent of the property as it was received by the city of Fergus Falls for nothing, we might have a receptive audience. I don't know. But, but typically, the intent of the, the state allowing these conveyances to happen is not to provide opportunities for communities like that. I wish it was, because I agree with you that it's a nice property on a busy road, and there's certainly potential there. We've had a, a good number of businesses or prospective businesses inquire about that property over the years. And because of the status of the property, we certain, we, we just couldn't entertain that. And I'm not sure the state's going to be willing to entertain this at all. We just were not going to start that process until we had the council's blessing to do so.
Thanks, Andrew.
Is, is there any way that our lobbyists could give us a, a sense of, like, whether the state would be, you know, have an open ear to kind of something like this before we do? I hate to put kind of people to a lot of work. Ultimately, if it's not going to go anywhere, if we could get some sort of feedback as to whether or not we're even barking up the right tree. I mean, if they're, if, if the state is unwilling to grant anything, then it's dead in the water now.
Yeah, that, Your Honor, Councilmember Hicks, that's exactly where our, what our first call is going to be too, is our lobbyist saying, you know, lay out this process for us and talk about your experience with this and how you feel this could go. Depending on how this process plays out, that's why we wanted to suggest the potential lease option as well. If, if we hear right away that, you know, don't even bother going through this process, the state doesn't remove these restrictions, it's a lost cause, you're up against, you know, uphill battle, then it's, the question back to the city council is, do you want to look at alternative ways to work with the YMCA to accomplish what they're setting out to do, but also what the city suggested they do when they take this property on? So I didn't want to start those conversations or get the, you know, the train too far from the station without the council's blessing to work on this. And, and that's why we have it before you know.
And this, this resolution that's on the floor would allow you to do that? Would allow you to reach out to the state and find out what options are available?
Yeah.
And bring back before there's any transfer of that property?
Yes, and to be clear, this doesn't commit us to anything related to the YMCA. We're acknowledging that they've submitted this letter of intent and wanting to start those conversations to see how that could go.
Andrew, would you clarify, did this piece of property come from the county or did it come from the state?
This predates me, Your Honor, Councilmember Mortensen. I, I don't know exactly the process that, that was played out, but the restrictions come from the Department of Commerce, I believe, from the state. So it would, it would have been tax forfeit to the county. And then to convey it to the city, I think you have to have restrictions from the state. I wasn't here at the time, so I'm.
I, Your Honor, I believe that the county, the county has first dibs on it, and then if they don't want it, then it goes to the city, and then we, we have to decide what we want to do. And then we put, then they said, if you take it, we want to make a trailhead out of it, and then put all those restrictions on it. So that's kind of how it played out. I was on the council when that came through. So I think that's, is that right, Jim?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
I think you're on, Anthony.
Yeah, I was going to say it came from the county, but.
Yeah, the county had first dibs on it.
Yeah.
And they didn't want it.
All right, so the resolution on the floor would allow staff to work with the state to find out what those options for conveyance are.
I mean, the only thing I don't kind of necessarily like is the fact that we're accepting the YMCA's kind of letter of intent, which implies that we're accepting it. So.
I agree.
I think, I think I would sort of.
How about acknowledging? How would you know?
I think I'd like to say that we acknowledge their letter of intent as opposed to accept their letter of intent.
Yes.
Did you, so did, I think you made, was it you and Scott?
I think I made, I made.
You and Rachel.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll change that to acknowledge that.
Yeah.
Letter of intent.
Yep.
Okay.
That sounds good.
So there's a resolution acknowledging that letter of intent and allowing and directing staff to look at conveyance options? Roll call, please.
Freemire.
Yes.
Mortensen.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Sorry.
That resolution is approved.
I have another drink.
Next, we'll have the 2025 budget and levy presentation. We'll have a public comment period. We're going to continue, I think we're going to plan to continue the hearing at the December 16th meeting. Is that correct, Bill?
Yep, we'll talk through that a bit. Yep. So tonight, we are here for our annual budget presentation as part of the truth of taxation process. I'll go through the presentation. We went through this in September. We have continued to work as the tax levy committee on this, bringing it back tonight. So the public, we'll open a time for the public to speak. And then, so we were, we were all set to send this out to you on Wednesday right before Thanksgiving. We got some, some news regarding insurance rates for the city. Now, it was good news. So I'd like to preface with that, but we need a little more work to do on this. So we're presenting it as the tax levy committee put this together. We need a little more work because insurance rates are going to come down a bit, and it will have a significant impact. So we want to take some time to look at it. We found this out about four o'clock on Wednesday. So, and of course, the packet had just gone out. And so that's why we said, okay, let's present as we are, but let's continue this hearing to December 16th. So we'll look at the timeline here a little bit. We don't have December 16th on this slide. You'll see it at the end of the presentation. It's on that one. I changed that this morning. But in May, the tax levy committee started to work on this. So this committee, made up of the mayor, the city administrator, council person, Rachel's and Job, worked almost every week on this. Lately, we've gone down to maybe every couple of weeks, but throughout the summer, it was every week meeting on this. So thank you so much for the committee, for working through this. It's been a big project. I'm excited to be in December. Not only for some snow, but, you know, let's, let's get the year, let's get the budget put together and the year down. So, so in May, we presented in September, got it up to Otter Tail County by the end of September. And then we're here tonight. And again, like I just said, we'll look at continuing this to the 16th. We need to have the final levy to Otter Tail County by the end of December. So we do need this done by December 30th. We need to have the documents to the county at that time. So the assumptions again, that are currently in this budget, starting in the upper right there, wages 3.5%. You as a city council have approved that in previous meetings. So that is done. We now could put that in here. Electric, 2%, city utilities, 5%, natural gas at 8. Now, we're going to move to some insurance. Currently, we have 8% in for liability, property at 9%, auto at 8. So we are looking at those numbers coming down some, and that's what we need to work on. I don't even, haven't even started pulling on those numbers. Internal service equipment rent at 5% is in here. Workers' comp, we have a 5% increase in there. We're looking at that decreasing, and that's probably where our more significant savings will be. So that's what we're currently working on. We're going to get back together as a tax levy committee and then bring that back on the 16th as well. And then health insurance at 7.65 through Lakes Country Service Co-op. We have that number. So our budget highlights, this was from September. The next slide is where we're at tonight, but I wanted to start, where were we at in September? Total proposed revenues of $55,264, expenditures of $53.6. The property tax levy, that's the main number we're talking about, $8,941,000. That was a $794,000 increase, or 9.75. And that includes both the city and the Port Authority. Our Port Authority is considered a special revenue fund of the city. It is a separate taxing jurisdiction, but for this presentation, it's all rolled in together. So that was September, 9.75. And we stood here and saying the tax levy was going to continue to work on this. You can always go down, but you can't go above that number. So what was in September was setting the maximum. So here tonight, updated for December 2nd there, our proposed revenues at $56,235. I'm just going to, wrote some notes because we made some changes to the capital project fund as well. So our revenues are actually up proposed, and I'll go through those in a little bit of detail. Expenses for the whole budget from 53.6 on the previous slide up to $54,091,000. And then the property tax levy, this is where we went down to $8,620. The change from the current year, 2024, is $473,000, or 5.81. So again, we're down to 5.81, oops, from the 9.75 that we presented. So you can see that's going down. We're not going up from that. As far as those proposed revenues and whatnot, slight change in the general fund of a $40,000 decrease, but our capital project fund, we increased $561,000. That is from updating the capital improvement plan, putting in estimated revenue sources and the expenses. So, and we'll talk about those when we get to another slide. Airport capital project fund, same thing, changing some projects around there through the capital improvement plan. And then the enterprise funds, the water, the sewer, the storm, the refuse fund. Since September, I went through, even just, you know, maybe three weeks ago, we have better information. Now, we're further along in the year, updated the forecast for where we'll land in 2024 and how that would flow into 2025 and beyond. So that's where some of those changes in the total budget came from, in the revenues and expenses. But the levy, we want to drive home that fact of where we're at here as of tonight. So the proposed budget by fund type, the general fund, again, that's our general operating fund of the city. That's where police, fire, streets, parking wreck, economic development, all of us in administrat- That's where police, fire, streets, parking wreck, economic development, all of us in administration are in there as well. Special revenue funds, there's where you have dedicated revenue sources, the public library, the, um, Bigwood Event Center, the Port Authority, those fall under those funds. Debt service, that's where we make the payment on our bonds that we have outstanding. Capital project funds, where we build things, where we do the projects, also where we collect the special assessment and taxes on the permanent improvement revolving funds that we use to pay the bonds, that we do transfers in between. So we could go into that detail of how that flows, but enterprise funds, the liquor stores in there, the refuse fund, water, sewer, stormwater, and then the internal service equipment fund. That's the central fleet of equipment for the city, all owned by one fund, rented out to the other funds of the city. So this just in pie chart form shows the twenty twenty-four revenues versus the twenty twenty-five. You can see we're going from sixty-nine point nine down to fifty-six, um, million, two thirty-five, six fifty-one. And it shows the very, the various breakup of, um, her allocation of revenues. And you can see bonds were much higher in twenty twenty-four, that was the sales tax bonds. Remember, we did the aquatic center, we're doing the Day Lagoon project. We've had the dairy in both of these years, um, the four million dollar, because that project hasn't happened yet, but we do have a signed grant agreement now, but that's the why the big shift in bonds, um, going down for the next year. Expenditure side, we kinda see that same thing, see how the capital outlay is at forty-two percent versus twenty-five percent? That's those large sales tax capital projects that were, you know, one-time large projects, then we're back out, and we'll, we'll dive into those capital projects in a later slide as well. But you can see our expense budget going from sixty-seven point nine million down to about fifty-four million for twenty twenty-five. And again, all of that is at the city as a whole, um, everything rolled up together. So here's a summary again of that levy, we're currently at eight million, six hundred and twenty thousand. Twenty twenty, twenty-four, twenty twenty-four was eight, one forty-seven, up to four seventy-three or five point eight one. Now, when we look at the tax rate, we're looking at that, um, going up to fifty-eight point two eight five, up slightly, you know, from the five point eight one by six point three four. Now, the parcel that the Otter Tail Power Plant was on, that value has decreased significantly because that's finally getting phased out. That's where some of that, often, you know, we see, oh, the new construction that's rolling in for that tax rate. Here, we're actually seeing, um, tax value pulled off through that Otter Tail Power. At another slide, we'll get into talking about the electric generation aid we're getting for the, um, from the state of Minnesota. Two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, we've added into this budget. I've worked with the state of Minnesota on that estimate and Otter Tail County, so we're feeling very confident about that. That aid will stay in place for twenty years, will get phased out then five percent a year is what we're looking at. So fixed costs for the city. Personnel, this includes workers' comp on the previous slide in September, I needed more lines here, so I had workers' comp separate, but four hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred on the three point five that was approved for the contracts. You know, we have steps and lanes that people are moving through, so when you have a younger workforce, you know, they'll be moving up a step as well as that cost of living. Aquatic center operations in there, the city funding, a hundred and twenty-five thousand of that. Public safety aid, we used a hundred thousand in twenty twenty-four, that was one-time aid, so that's an automatic increase here, that's fixed. Equipment rental, that five percent we talked about, seventy-four thousand. The bond debt, debt service at seventy-one six. I know there's a new levy in there for, um, the street projects that we did, Summit, Linden, Laurel and the Stanton Avenue Project. That's showing up in there. Insurance, we will come back and be looking at adjusting that number on the sixteenth. Utilities, the tax abatement program's going up, um, we have the various abatements out there and the housing abatement program that we just talked about, so we adjusted that. The RTC maintenance fund going up sixty-nine hundred. So we wanted to point out, what are all the costs that are just basically fixed that are going up? It's nine hundred and fifty thousand. There's that electric generation aid that's meant to offset our costs coming in, two fifty-nine brings us down to six ninety-one. So without that aid, we would be at eleven point six six percent instead of the five point eight one we're at. And when we pull in that electric generation aid, we're still at eight point four eight of fixed costs over the five point eight one where we're currently at. So I'm gonna grab my water, but we're gonna talk about a little bit some of the changes that we made here. So we wanted to point out separately, now, back in September, a couple of these positions I had rolled into the staff under the fixed costs, but really, I wanted to break those out and show you, um, choices that are being made to, um, bring costs down. So the GIS planning position was eliminated from the budget, um, that person left, the employee of the city, we didn't fill it. Information technology, we had an analyst on staff, we have historically carried two people in that department, but we're moving to the civic systems, we've talked about that in the past. So we are not filling that position as we are moving to this, um, external, um, IT program. And then the rental registration and code enforcement, this came up since September. That person left the employee of the city, and we're not filling that either. We'll talk throughout here, we are moving some, um, duties around in that over about, you know, three different departments, trying to make that up. So from this, we have cut staff, three staff members, um, only to just, um, three eighty-six five. So wanted to point that out to you to know what's going on here. Okay, how are the tax rates, um, determined? Otter Tail County is the assessor, they assess the value of the property, and the property tax class rates are established by the state of Minnesota. Class rates are applied to that market value that's assessed. You as a city council set the tax levy at a flat dollar amount, you choose a dollar amount to levy, and then that gets sent to Otter Tail County, and they spread it over the pie to do the collection. So the tax levy is divided by the tax capacity value to determine the rate, and when you got that rate, then you take that and apply it back against the individual properties then. So that's just a high level of how that works. I just like to, um, you know, there's a lot of confusion, sometimes people think that their taxes would just automatically go up if their value goes up. Well, if every property in the city changed value all at the same time and all in the exact same percentage, taxes wouldn't change, your value, it's just the base that is changing. But when we, we do increase the levy, that impacts it, and then some values go up and others go down, and some go up by more, that's how that all starts to, to change around and look different for everyone. And here tonight, we're looking at the city as a whole, we're not looking at individual properties, you'd have to work with Otter Tail County on that if you wanted to see individual properties.
As you say, Bill, I think that's worth noting that.
What's that?
The city does not set an individual property tax value.
Correct.
As you say, that's, that's done by the county.
Correct.
That's why they often post a note through your door saying they wanna inspect your home.
Yep, it's all on the county side. Okay, this is just, um, a chart showing that tax levy, and you can see we've, um, kind of a steady increase on the levy side, the, um, the tax rate changing there over the years, um, so that summarizes that. Taxes and state aid, twenty twenty-five, our property tax levy, I've said this probably three times now, the eight point six two. We have the various breakdown of where that's coming from, um, between the general fund, the Port Authority and the library, that's our general operating funds under the levy. The, um, bond debt service, how it's changing, the tax abatements and the RTC there. Local government aid is basically staying pretty level this year, going up, um, six thousand, two forty-two, so up to that four point four million dollars. Us, you know, it's a important funding source for the city. Electric transition aid, we talked about that at the two fifty-nine, and then we did receive the one-time public safety aid last year, right at the end of the year, of twenty-three, of six hundred and fourteen, five, of which, you know, we've used one forty-five of that in this year's budget. This shows where the expenses go, um, public safety being the largest expense for the city, and that's very common for cities across the state. You can see streets and highways at twenty percent, little bit for the airport, parking wreck at eighteen, general government at eighteen percent, and then the community and economic development for three. General government area, um, expenditures, you know, they're actually decreasing from twenty twenty-four to twenty-five. We talked about those positions that were cut, so we're actually cutting some in, um, you know, general government from GIS, planning, technology, general government buildings and payroll. We had our previous payroll person on phased retirement, so half their salary was in this year. Now, we're, we're back just to the, our new payroll person, so that salary cost is out of here as well. Of course, the city is experiencing inflation like everywhere else. Our costs of our equipment, supplies, fuel, every, you know, everything that you see in your homes, we experience it here as well. Employee contracts were settled at three point five, legal fees, um, for prosecutions we have in here increasing over a three-year phase, phase in of that, um, to bring it up to more market rate. Uh, we included twenty thousand in for our lobbyist, um, we normally spend forty-three thousand, four twenty, dropping that down because we don't have any big items on the table, but certainly will continue to work with that person. And then wanted to point out again, we're implementing that new IT system as well during twenty-five. Public safety, you can see our police department budget of just over five million dollars. We have twenty-four licensed officer positions, we have an elementary school resource officer. We're funding that with that public safety aid, um, over four years, I believe we're using from that pot of money for that. Um, we have five office staff over there, fire department, just over a million dollar budget. We have three full-timers, thirty-seven on call, paid-on calls. And, um, we did reallocate one of their positions, a portion of that to rental registration, as that was part of that dividing up the duties. Our department is taking some of it as well, um, as well as public works. Talks about, you know, the engines, seeing what they have there, and certainly when we get back into the capital improvement planning process in early twenty-five, we'll talk more about the fire engine we talked about too, our ladder truck. We did increase, um, the building and capital funding to the fire department by thirty thousand. Rental registration, we already talked about that, we eliminated that staff position. And then police and fire do continue to save for those capital items. We do carry forward unspent capital out, we like to save it, you would put a down payment on a fire truck, for example. Streets and highways at three million dollars. Our budget does include three to four percent increase for the street materials, the overlays and the seal coats. The tax levy committee knew we're gonna have a lot of discussions about street reconstructions. We're doing pretty good on our maintenance side in the general fund right now. We know there's gonna be money in levies to go into those reconstruction projects, so that's why we tried to just do an inflationary increase here. Street lighting contract, um, we moved to Otter Tail Power with that over the few, last few years. So we have new lights on Stanton Avenue that are in here, and then those lights you're seeing right, um, to the north of us here across the river are, um, in this budget now as well. So, um, we'll talk more about, you know, the utility projects, we get to the four oh three fund. We did include fifty thousand dollars in the budget for traffic, um, signal cabinets. Those are the controlling cabinets for that, we have a number of those to do over the coming years. This would be for the one at Lincoln and Union to start that process. Parks and Rec, um, at two point eight million dollars, we have twenty-nine parks on five hundred and fifty-one acres. You can see our new aquatic center operations, you can see the city contribution where we talked about that in our fixed costs. The new campground, we changed this from being open half a season to now a third of a season next summer. So, um, we tamed down the revenues and the expenses on that side as well. Kids camp, we talked about that earlier, um, we did increase the fees for that to cover, um, the use at the arena as well. We have fifty thousand dollars in for the golf, um, course, based on that letter of intent. We know that's on hold right now, but we still have that fifty thousand sitting in here. Historically, we're maybe spending around forty-five thousand, so that's up five from, um, the historic amounts. And we do have a halftime position in park maintenance, um, adding to, um, so we, we had a full-timer that was split between the arena and parks. We are moving that arena one to a, um, permanent part-time, so more flexible hours. And then we wanna rehire that full-timer all in parks now, so it's actually an addition of half a FTE in the park budget. But if you think about all the things we're adding with across the river, the aquatic center, campground, there is an argument to be made for the need for park maintenance. Economic development and community development, um, increase the funding from fifty to seventy thousand for Greater Fergus Falls. That extra twenty thousand to be used toward a staff member over there getting more services from Greater Fergus Falls. I know that's all in the works, but we've built that into the budget here. We have the various TIF districts, tax abatement districts we've talked about, and the city runs, um, revolving loan programs as well that are in the budget. Community development is the community development department, as well as Visit Fergus Falls that's funded with the lodging tax. General fund collects the tax, pays it over to Visit Fergus Falls to, um, for them to do their work. The Port Authority, uh, levy at sixty-seven thousand, down from seventy-two, that's used to fund operations of the Port Authority. We collect lease revenues from the state of Minnesota that fund the operations at the Community Behavioral Health Hospital. We also collect lease payments from Lake's Country Service Co-op that pays for the operations and the bonds of the facility, the bonds, not the operations, for Lake's Country Service Co-op, for the level for education facility. Port also owns industrial parks, residential property, the Norga property, um, on the edge of town, as well as the dairy property downtown. And the city is levying in this budget ninety thousand, eight hundred for those twenty twenty-five debt service payments on the, um, dairy for those deed to loans. We have the cleanup revolving loan and the demolition loan. Public library budget at just over a million, mainly property tax funded for the library, but also receives, um, regional library aid, and operations are very stable. Nothing too out of the ordinary for the library, just the normal, um, inflationary increases there. Bigwood Event Center, um, we have, um, a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar transfer from the liquor store to the Bigwood. We have the estimated revenues and the estimated expenses, we need that transfer to, um, balance that out. So we're not having enough revenue to support the expenses of the Bigwoods, so we're taking that from the liquor store. We share some, um, staff with the liquor store, and then we do have the fifteen thousand in the budget for an additional marketing campaign. That has not been approved by the city council yet, so we would probably actually want you to, um, if you wanna take action on that tonight, that could be a good thing to talk about. Could also do it on the sixteenth with the budget, but again, it's in here, we've talked about that in the past, but we needed your approval first before moving forward with that. Okay, capital improvements, we are getting there, I promise. We'll go through capital, then we'll get into the enterprise funds and, um, open it up. So capital projects, street projects within this budget of seven point four million dollars, the dairy property of four million, that is the one that is grant funded, a hundred percent grant funded, that's for the trail, the railroad crossings, some amenities down there. RTC preservation, we're estimating three hundred and eighty thousand left on that, um, state grant. We don't have a current plan for that, that's something we'd come back with the council, is there something we could do with the three eighty? Sidewalks includes our sidewalk program as well as the stair project over on Randolph. And Brian, was that part of the safe house to school? Or it might have been a separate.
Transportation alternatives.
Okay, transportation alternatives. A hundred and seventy-two of that is for that stairway project, grant funded, city, um, paying thirteen thousand of it, and the school paying thirteen thousand of it for the, the math side of that. So that comes down to just over twelve million dollars of capital improvements. Because they're in here does not mean they're all approved, those projects would have to come back before the council. Because of what's on this slide, we definitely, um, wanna drive that project, that point home. So we have our street projects here at the seven point four, you can see Arlington, um, Sheridan area, one point seven. Cleveland will be three point seven, Ferb Freiberg roundabout at seven hundred thousand, that would be state aid funded. Junius at nine oh three, Shoreview two ninety, and the parking lot by the Red River Mill at a hundred thousand. You can see the estimated funding sources, and bonding would be five point eight million dollars of that project. As an example, Cleveland would normally, um, it's a state aid route project, we, it's eligible for state aid. However, our state aid funds are already allocated to other projects. This is all based, remember when we've said the, the more fast track, the more aggressive street plan? That's what is still in here, that's what we're gonna talk more about in early twenty twenty-five. That's what we're going to talk more about in early twenty twenty-five. Because what I highlighted in yellow there with that bond over fifteen years would be a five hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar levy to make those debt service payments for those street improvements, which that alone would be a six point oh four percent increase over this proposed levy. Thus why we're going to talk about that more and find out what direction do you want to go as a council with projects? Enterprise funds, we did review the refuse funds, refuse fund rates in detail. I do have those on a separate slide here. Water sewer storm, we're going to come back with you because that's all tied to the capital improvement plan as well. Because when you do the street above, we always look at what's underneath. And if we need reconstruction or lining a sewer line, or are they good? Then it's just a mill and overlay. So we've got to look through all those. So further discussion to come with the council in early twenty-five on that. Liquor store is profitable, making money there, so that's holding its own certainly. And, you know, a lot of money gets transferred out of that fund to the general fund, as well as, like I said, the one fifty-three to the Big Wood Center. But I think to the general fund, if we're at six to seven hundred thousand dollars going there, to basically bring property taxes down in the general fund. And we can dive into that more in a future, you know, go through the liquor store with you and show you more in detail of its performance, what projects are on the horizon for that as well. Refuse fund, this just shows trying to maintain that operating income. Again, after this line comes transfers out as well from all these funds to the general fund. But we do this ten-year projection we went through, you know, to make sure we're maintaining funds to, to do the capital. So this is what we went through on Wednesday, looking at residential commercial at a three percent, the tipping fee of three and a half percent. Our costs are going up for disposal of the garbage, so passing that along here. Recycling going up a dollar. The landfill M S W, so that's the general garbage that gets brought to the landfill separately, going from twenty-two fifty to twenty-six, that does include the tax. Garbage bags going from forty-six, dumpsters eighteen to twenty for the rent, forty-six to fifty for the pick. The roll-offs, remember we talked about those large twenty and thirty? You can see the changes there. And then the demolition rate being the big one, going from thirty-three forty to forty-seven forty. And we talked about that, about the expansion project at the landfill. If we're going to stay in that business and, you know, we have bonds outstanding. I think it was nine oh five, nine hundred and five thousand on that as well from the project, you know, the long-term project of that. So we did discuss that on Wednesday. I won't go into that in any more detail now. Sewer fund, same thing, looking at rates to maintain, you know, profitability. So we have funds to do those sewer lines under the streets and maintain our plants. Same with the water. And water, we have a larger operating income there than the sewer plant because we have less cash in the water fund. So when we project things out, trying to manage the cash balance on all these funds, that's why we've had to push water up a bit more on the profitability side for the cash flow. Store and water, same story there. Equipment fund, that's treated like an enterprise fund as well. It's called the internal service, looking at doing nine hundred and sixty-two thousand of equipment in twenty twenty-five as well as some building things down at the shop. Next steps, we're here tonight looking at continuing this to December sixteenth. Would want council action that night because we need to go to the county by the thirtieth. I think that is my last slide. All right.
Thank you, Bill. And at this time, we will open up the floor for public comment and then we can come back to the council. But just again, we won't be taking action on this until the sixteenth. But public at this time is welcome to step to the lectern and provide comments at this time.
Good job, Bill. I appreciate your hard work with your staff. Flying over quickly, let's just say that the city budget was fifty dollars and you only spend forty-eight. Where does the two go?
If something unspent, it goes into the fund balance of the, of the fund. So that's the net worth of that fund, basically.
So far taxes, real estate taxes were up, let's say, six percent this year. And that two dollars would represent that eight percent. Could next year, those funds that were saved reduce real estate taxes?
You could. We do have a, a fund balance policy that we look at and, because we want to make sure we maintain a certain amount of savings account, basically. Because we receive our tax payments twice a year, L G A twice a year. So at the end of the year, you need a fund balance to get you to June, so to cash flow operations. And we look, our policy is, I think it's thirty-five to forty percent of the next year's expenses. So looking at what you're going to spend the next year. And we are right in there on that with the general fund. Now, I can't quote off the top of my head the exact, but it's right in there. So we are maintaining an appropriate fund balance. But if we were going to spend it down, like you said, okay, if you have that savings, it should be spent down on a one-time expenditure because, of course, we can't live on a savings account. You know, if you had something come up one year that's fifty dollars and you're never going to have to pay it again, well, then you could probably take that out of fund balance. But you wouldn't want to pay for wages out or some ongoing expenses out of a savings account, so.
I understand that, but let's look, two years ago, let's say you had a million dollar snow removal budget and you spent nothing. Where did that million go?
We do save that in the snow removal budget. So when we have a bad year, we do carry any snow removal. We have a standing resolution that that goes into snow removal, so we don't take it to another area.
Yeah, so it stays in the enterprise, if you will.
Correct, in that segment. When I do do that, I look at salaries across because, of course, those people that would have been doing snow removal now may be working over here. So I do look citywide, you know, just because if we're underspending in wages of full-time in the snow removal, I don't necessarily carry that all over. I look across the board to make sure, okay, did it get spent in parks? Did it get spent in water fund? But like overtime, for example, that's, you know, they're not spending that elsewhere. That then gets carried over. Any salt, chemical costs that we don't have to spend gets carried over into streets. It stays in streets.
I appreciate the council's action to save taxpayer seventy-five hundred bucks here on that land sale. Where would that go?
So this, it depends what fund it's owned by. I think this would be the general fund, so that would probably come into the general fund.
Yeah, there's some twenty grand nineteen four or whatever it was.
Right.
If that was a million and nine, could it be used to reduce real estate taxes next year? A one-time deal?
One-time deal.
I'm sure there will be more next year. Bill, thank you. Your staff does a good job.
Thank you, Mr. Layden. Anyone else like to speak at this time?
Dwayne Cookman, five forty-three West Stanton, Mayor, Council. I saw on there for the Greater Fergus Falls, I thought the last budget for that was fifty thousand. And I see you got seventy thousand now?
Correct.
Because I know that I went in front of the council that they wanted it up to like another forty-six thousand plus five percent versus anything they sold. Where did the, where did that percentage come up from?
This twenty thousand? Do either of you want to touch on that? It's, it's with the staffing.
Yeah.
But what we did, we looked at it as they're going to hire a staff person and they don't need a full, they're going to, where they're changing, it's not going to be a full-time staff. They're going to have a full-time, but they're not going to be able to fund it. So we're going to take that twenty thousand dollars and help them fund that. But we're going to use that staff person also to do some of the duties that these people are not, the three positions we lost out on. If we have some clerical work or whatever it works out, we're going to use that funding to pay that, you know, to go to, I mean, that's why we're going to take their time from that. So we can say that we're using, we're paying a third of the wage or whatever it is. So it'll come back to us and we can, so we're paying for it. So we're, we're getting work back out of them, is what I guess what I'm saying. We're not giving it to them for free. We're going to get work out of them again for, out to next year. Only if, only if we need it. I mean, it doesn't mean we're going to give it to them. If we don't spend it, then we don't have to give it to them if we don't use it.
Is that going to come, has that already been approved for the council? I don't remember hearing that.
What's that?
I don't remember hearing that increase going through the council.
Well, it comes from the tax levy committee. Now, that's what we're here for right now.
Okay, so how does that differ from when they brought it before the Greater Fergus Falls wanted to increase it?
We didn't accept that, the tax levy said, no, we're not going to give you that much. But we tried to figure out what we could do to use, you know, we're going to miss in three people and it's going to save, you know, it's three hundred and some thousand, wasn't it, Bill?
Yeah, three hundred and six thousand.
So we took, we got twenty thousand dollars and get some of that help that we can do, that we need to help other staff out. It's just a good, good place for us to spend that twenty thousand. No, if we don't use that person over there, we don't use any hours, then we don't spend, we don't give any money to them. They bill us monthly.
We were going to probably look at fifteen thousand, but we included twenty in because if we had other economic development services or a study that we needed, say with Baker Tilly or something. So I did misspoke that it was all for Greater Fergus Falls. Fifteen of that was our intention with five being for other, so.
It just goes back to what Mr. Layden was talking about, that if we don't spend it, we still get to keep it. It doesn't go to them automatically, that twenty thousand.
Okay, then I saw part-time for plant maintenance and it was like forty-nine thousand?
For parks.
Yeah, for parks.
Yep.
Okay, now forty-nine thousand for part-time seems to be, what, how many hours are they looking at?
So it's not part-time, that is the other half of a full-time. So that includes all the benefits, you know, FICA, Medicare, health insurance, that's in that forty-nine. So that's not the salary number, that's the cost of making, we were charging half of a person to parks and they were working only in parks half the year. The other half they were at the arena. We're looking now at having them in parks the full year. And then that over in the arena, moving that to being a, a permanent part-time where that person works twenty hours a week.
Okay, so now is that their full cost? Okay, let, let's say they have an hourly, is it, you know, you're taking a hundred thousand dollars, you know, is that what they're getting paid? Or is this plus the benefits, plus everything?
This includes the benefits, so, yep. The, the wage is less than that forty-nine, yep.
But we all have budgets and I see this going up and up. And I'm just like, where are we taking more cuts? Where can we, you know, I appreciate Councilman Mortensen, you know, scrutinizing and looking at it. And I'm just like, this is a totally breath of fresh air. Because it's like, well, let's say for this, that, the TIF. I want, one of the questions I wanted to say, you know, for this apartment complex. I'm just like, would that trigger an audit? You know, what's the occupancy? You know, do you have the residents there that would still pass that criteria?
We audit that every year. That's a requirement before they receive a TIF payment, they're audited.
Okay, so you've done an audit on apartment occupancy?
And income levels.
For the city?
For the TIF.
It's a certification, they have to send in, they have to report in and it's a certification.
For the city, because now I'm going to go back to eight oh one West Stanton for that project. But there wasn't a current one. There wasn't a current occupancy of apartments that would meet that criteria.
For eight oh one, there is no apartment there yet.
No, but that contractor was counting on that TIF and you were voted for that. But then he didn't get a different government grant, how I understand it, and it fell through. But the city's still buying eight oh one.
Correct.
Do we know what?
With the grant that we were awarded for that, six hundred and forty thousand, right? Yep.
Okay, do we still know what the occupancy is for rental in the area?
Not until it's built, that occupancy re.
That occupancy, yes. But wouldn't you want to take a look at what the current?
I think you're talking about a market study.
Market study.
And that was.
That was done as part of that.
As part of that project.
Yes.
But it was, that was, what is it then? Because it wasn't, I don't know what that is. Did you tell the public?
The developer funded that, city didn't fund it, he used it for his purposes. I haven't, I don't think I've seen it, Claire maybe has.
We didn't.
There's a public one that was done by the, by Otter Tail County that you can look at, that's online. And that lays out housing needs basically across the spectrum from single family to senior.
For Otter Tail County?
For Otter Tail County, yep.
But not, you don't know for Fergus Falls yet?
Well, what, which sector are you, are you asking about? Like workforce housing?
Eight oh one, where they, okay, they wanted to build at sixty apartments. Okay, and that's the one I, I would be very interested in because it was based upon, we need to build it, they will come.
The twenty twenty-one study that was funded by Otter Tail County put the city of Fergus Falls or the, I believe, the region that we are in, in the county, said that there was a, I believe, fifty, fifty unit shortage as of that study in twenty twenty-one for workforce housing specifically.
But there wasn't one in twenty twenty-four.
There was, again, there was one that was done by.
That the developer did himself.
We are going to keep the comments here to the budget, twenty, twenty twenty-five budget. So if you have any more comments about that, we're happy to take those.
Okay, for our cost of living, it'd be nice to see where our, the cost would parallel that. And I see it extending that going higher than what our cost of living, what we're getting paid more. So that's where I ask a lot of questions and sometimes I'm just uninformed. I just don't know. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cookman.
Ben, I think it would be helpful also to point out, though, that there's different requirements with different TIF programs. And the eight oh one Stanton program, project was a market rate housing deal. And the one you were comparing to had subsidized housing. And that TIF requirement then is different reporting requirement so long with.
That's where I don't know. I'm just like, what was the return on investment for TIFs?
Right.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Please.
Laurel Kildy, I was contacted, I think because someone thought I was on council already and I'm not. So the question late this afternoon, it was after staff was closed, so I apologize, is, the person is wondering about the school resource officers specifically, supports them in the schools, as do I, wondering why when the school district is wider than the city of Fergus Falls, why only the city of Fergus Falls is perceived to be responsible for that cost? And I know one of them is a grant-based situation.
The school district does reimburse the city, that's on the revenue side. So we do have the cost for the school resource officer, but the, the school then sends us a check-in once a year to cover the cost of that officer, so.
Anyone? Anyone else from the public? Okay, like I said, we will continue the public meeting on December sixteenth. So at that time, we'll take actions and council.
Ben?
Scott?
In Bill's presentation, he suggested that we take a look at that fifteen thousand dollar marketing plan for the Big Wood and either add that or not. And if we want to talk about that, I guess.
I would suggest we do that on the sixteenth if that's appropriate. Give people time to, you know, to consider that and ask the question.
Currently in the budget, we just wanted to be very upfront with you. It's in there, but we wanted your approval on it, so it's not, you know, we had had separate discussion about that at council level, so.
So that can be discussed and modified, I guess.
Yep.
Could Steph reach out to visit Fergus Falls and see whether, I mean, because I think that was the last kind of ask was that they fund some to expand the marketing area.
Yeah.
And I, and I know they passed on it, but I believe they're sitting on like a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So I think that begs the question of what are they marketing for the city? Or, you know, I mean, if they're collecting revenue from hotels and they're not spending it, then the question should we ask, why, why do we support them building people more for hotels if they're not going to spend it on marketing the city? So I think.
I think it's a little higher than that.
It's higher than that? That makes it even worse than, you know, because I mean, they collected money. I mean, like, I know as a company, we spend a lot of money on hotels.
Let's invite them on the sixteenth to give them an opportunity to tell what their budget is. Because just because they have certain. Because just because they have a certain amount of savings, doesn't mean that they've-
They're certainly restricted by state law what they spend on, but yeah, I know they were approached about this and have not taken action to.
I can, Ben, I can, their budget's 155. According to their statute or their bylaws, they're supposed to keep 40,000, I think, in savings. But it's a lot more than that. I don't know the exact, I won't say the exact number, but it's more than his. I don't know what the exact number is, but.
So if they're going to be part of that conversation, we should just invite them to the 16th meeting and ask them there, I guess. That's all right with you guys? Okay, so we'll continue this public meeting on December 16th and take action at that time from the council. Moving along to presentation of claims. Tonight we have bills in the amount of $1,195,352.64. If there's any questions from the council, we will direct them to our finance director.
I'll offer the resolution and pay the bills.
Thank you, Bill. I'll second it. Second, Mr. Mortensen. Did I say Bill? Jim, sorry, Jim. I'm sorry. Mike second, Mr. Mortensen second. Roll call, please. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. There is no old unfinished or new business that I'm aware of. Don't have any announcements. Lynn, do you have any announcements? All right, with that then, again, the public meeting.
Your Honor, I don't know if I'm allowed to speak at this time, but I had a constituent come up to me that wanted to know if I could acquire a copy of the mall grant application.
Yeah.
And then they wanted to know if there was going to be a chance for public input to that application.
To be public input, if, if, assuming that if we hear something back from, on that application, before we accept it, I would open the floor and let public like I always do.
Thanks.
Yeah, Al.
Just a question, did we get any clarification on those two-hour parking signs downtown? I brought it up at committee as a whole the other day.
Or was that, anything done on that?
Yeah, Your Honor. Lieutenant Miller, who is here, brought that back to the chief and Chief Bergen was going to connect with the business in question and I haven't heard back as to how that conversation went.
I'll go speak to that business too then.
But I know that was in motion.
Very good, thank you. All right, yeah, Jim.
At our next meeting, could we get a report on the swimming pool of where it's at?
Roosevelt.
My understanding, I'm hearing that they're working there at 6 o'clock in the morning now. And I guess I'd kind of like to know what they're doing and where we're at.
Got it. We can certainly do that, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's nothing else to come before the council, we're adjourned.